Hello and welcome to the 2023 Meet the Candidate Forum. I'm Erica Brown, and I'm the editor and publisher of The Manchester Cricket. Manchester's election is May the 16th, and we have three candidates running for two seats on the Manchester's Select Board, which is essentially the town's chief executive body. It's basically the collective mayor of the town. It has overall responsibility for the general operations of town government. This year's candidates are in alphabetical order. From the left, Karen Bennett; in the center, Anne Harrison; at the far right, John Round. Welcome. Our program is going to run tonight in three parts. The first part will be the candidates introducing themselves. They'll all be timed within about two minutes each. Hopefully, everyone is respectful of time. Thank you ahead of time. They'll do it briefly, and I will again call on you in alphabetical order. Then each of the candidates will be asked to answer a series of questions. They're all common questions, and we have shared them with the candidates ahead of time. I'm very much in the camp that people should be prepared and prepare answers that are thorough for what the important issues that people are interested in for this town, and it also gives everyone equal access to the same information. But then, in the last part, we will open up questions to the audience, to the voters who are here tonight. Thank you for coming. For that portion, that last portion, I have a partner in crime, Eli Bowling, will be fielding questions from the audience. Thank you very much, Eli. So the forum is being taped by 1623 Studios. Thank you very much. And it will be broadcast on all of its K-PAN channels. That includes television and online and on social media. My job is to make sure that the program runs on time. So when you hear me kind of responding to your comments, I might be just gently telling you that you've gone over time. Please be respectful of that. In any case, I hope everybody's excited. I know I am. Let's get started with introductions. Again, we will start with Karen Bennett. Welcome.
Hi, folks. I have been a resident of Manchester by the Sea for the last 25 years, and I have approximately 40 years in management. I've worked for, in the private sector, I've worked for a number of companies, and mostly in high tech. And I have a little funny story about that. I actually worked with Ray Ozzy at Lotus. I was there before he was, and when it was a very small company. And I was quite impressed that he was interested in Manchester by the Sea. And I said, wow, that's a place that I want to check out again. You come up a few times. And I fell in love with it again and said, this is where I need to live. And that was my objective, and I got here. So very happy about that, and I love being here, and I love the community. I work in software sales management and have a number of people that work for me. And a lot of the time that I've spent in management, 10 of those years, were spent in finance, in both healthcare and in retail. So I have got a broad experience. I know some people know that I have a background in Six Sigma as well, and, you know, it's been a great tool for me. I have, I would say, one of the things that are quality for me is I have an uncanny knack at being able to read people, and have hired very skilled, successful teams over my career. And I'm very proud of that. I've had, I spend a lot of time kind of researching people, and it's been a really good thing. I also am exposed on a daily basis to contract negotiations, which is mainly what I do for my team, and then multimillion-dollar contracts. So it's a major portion of what I do every single day. My exposure, let's see, the one skill that I would say that is imperative is listening, and that's one thing lots of salespeople don't do. Listening is key, and that's what I, you know, it's a good thing. And it's also, I am a very, I like to make a common sense approach to everything, and I'm very transparent, I'm very direct. I have lived in Massachusetts my whole life. I am a New Englander through and through. A common question that I get from some people is, like, why are you running for the office? And I say to people that I think we can do better. The boards can be very polite to the public, but I'd like to bring the bridge over so that we can get a little bit more, I guess, interacting with residents. When the SLV project started, I was never interested in getting into anything like this, but when SLV started heating up, I started getting involved. I got on a lot of calls, and I think a lot of people will tell you that I have been on several calls every single week on Manchester, the FinCom, you name it, I've been on it. I'm very interested in what's going on. So it's probably like 100 or something calls later. My opinion is that we've got a big disconnect between what the residents want and what is happening within our administration. So to me, that is a gap that needs to be filled. What's the biggest challenge that we have today? I would say it's be working better together and being more transparent. We can be better if we do it together. That's what's most important. I'm in agreement with the master plan, been through that, and to preserve the uniqueness and character of our town and our natural resources is very important to me. So, sorry. I certainly respect all the work that the boards have done. I know that they go through a ton of work, but I have, I do question why we have roughly $7 million in reserves, and yet we're asking to pay for our fields via a bond. Doesn't make any sense to me. So that's definitely something that I would like to get into. Okay, one last thing. So, and the last thing I'd like to say is, our population is aging. We know that. People want to age in their homes, and they want to have alternatives, but we cannot task, tax our senior people and force them out of town. So that's also very important to me as well. So I make a common sense approach. That's why I'm running, and I'm very interested in hearing from residents. That is very key to me.
Thank you very much. Anne Harrison?
Thank you, Erica. As we all do, I'm going to start out by saying, I moved to town in 1963 against my wishes, but my parents thought it was a good idea. I moved back in 1989 voluntarily, in fact eagerly. Shortly thereafter, a friend said, you know, you really ought to join the Finance Committee. It's a great thing for a sailor. We work in the winter, we take the summer off. And I did, and I found it fascinating, just going through the town's budgets, figuring out how the various departments work, how they work together, and didn't. So I was on the Finance Committee for six years around the time of regionalization. So I was very much involved with setting up the regional district and then trying to teach the regional district a little bit about finances, because there was a kind of a lack of information there. I had been on the Finance Committee since in between then. Then I ran for School Committee. I spent three terms on the School Committee and dealing with a high school that wasn't nearly good enough. So I was involved in the, I was not on the Building Committee, but I was involved in the building planning. And now I've just completed a term on the Select Board, which started with COVID. And suddenly, we couldn't meet, we needed to figure out. Fortunately, there were wiser heads on the board at the time who were able to pull that together. And that year, with the cooperation of the employees, we decided that we could hold our property taxes even, because everybody was in economic shock. It was more economic shock than really, than it was in 2008, when I was on the School Committee, and suddenly the economy fell out from underneath us, and we had a year when the school had to go through on twelfths until the budget could be reestablished. So I've seen financial issues from a number of perspectives. When I got on the Select Board, I looked and said, okay, what can, what needs to be adjusted now? And the first thing that occurred to me was, the people who were following us on Zoom or the people in the audience didn't have a program, and you can't follow the action if you don't have the program. So I said, well, why don't we just, why don't we publicize the packets? Oh, they've got telephone numbers, and they've got social security numbers when you're applying for a liquor license. Fine, edit it, put the packets out, so people can actually know what's going on in the meeting. Then we, something came up, and somebody said, oh, we've got a policy for that. We do. Yes, we have a book of policies. It was a stack of paper, about that thick, and nobody knew anything about it. So I digitized it and have been going through it since then, bringing the policies that started in the late '80s and early '90s, before we had a town administrator bringing those policies up to date. We're about halfway through. Another thing that I initiated was involvement with Facebook. It was considered, you just don't want to get into fights with these people. But these people, Facebook is a great tool for getting information to people and finding places where more information is needed. And I have not been wildly active, but I've tried to interact and provide information during the calls. So my approach, the biggest problem facing the town, I think we can work together, but I think we're going to have to work really hard to get together on the MBTA zoning issue.
Perfect. Thank you, Anne. John Round?
Yes, and thank you, Erica. Good evening, everyone. I'm John Round, and I'm running for reelection for the Select Board. Before I start into some of the details, I first want to thank Erica for setting up this forum, and I also want to thank all of you for showing up, taking time out of your busy schedule to attend and have an exchange with us and hear about our shares, so that we can share our views with you. And in fact, it's a two-way street. We'd like to hear what your views are as well. I also want to thank the folks that'll be watching this video from 1623 whenever they have an opportunity to do so. This will be broadcast at a later time. It's important that we all know where our town is and where it's going, and the fact that you're here means that you really want to be involved and know what the story is. I hope that some of you will become involved with town government as your life journey permits. I'm looking out here, and I see that a number of you already are. My wife, Mary Ann, and I moved to town here 24 years ago in 1999 from New Jersey with our three children. It's been a wonderful experience to have our children grow up here and to live in town here. Our kids have now been gone for over 10 years, and it's still a wonderful town for us as empty nesters or seniors or whatever the demographers want to call us. Anyway, it seems to be a wonderful town regardless of what your, which age group you're in, and we hope that that will continue. I'm running reelection really for three reasons. One is I want to give back some time to the town. Got a lot of wonderful memories that I've gathered here in the time I've been here, and I'd like to give some of that time back. I also want to help keep Manchester's character and culture. As we all know, the town is changing, and we must respond to that change. And finally, I'm running because I can. I'm retired. Being a selectman takes time out of your, out of your day, and certainly after three years on the Select Board, I know exactly how much time it takes. And all of these positions that people volunteer for, you can make them what you want. You know, you can just be a person on a committee and kind of participate in a slow way, or you can actually agitate or lobby for change, but you can be what you want. In the Select Board, it's a very critical position, and you've really got to be quite active to make things happen there. I'd also have to say that as a retiree, if you're not active and you just relax your way through retirement, that's just not me. It's not in my DNA. I have to be active. It makes you young, or I wouldn't say young, but it makes you younger than you are. I don't think we'll ever turn back to being young. With regard to the challenges that our town is facing, we don't have any acute problems that are going to be crises in the next few months or even the next few years. Our town is very well-run. We have a very strong staff led by Greg Fettersfield, and there are no panic situations. But we do have some trends that are a bit concerning with regard to the declining school enrollment and also the aging of our population, which is mentioned before. And this is something that we need to respond to fairly soon. It's not going to change things immediately, but it will in the long term, and if we're not careful in a generation from now, this town will be very different from the way it is right now. Diversifying our housing stock, I think, is a key tool to try and slow that trend. If we can offer housing that is of different sizes and different costs to not only the people who are here in town who would like to stay, and we all know that once you move in town, frankly, you don't want to leave, but perhaps you would like to downsize. But if we can offer that to folks in some way, perhaps we can keep the character and the culture of the town that we know today. Thank you.
That's perfect. Thank you very much, Karen, Anne, and John. Okay, so we're going to move into the question portion, question and answer, with me moderating the questions. We have five questions. I'm just warning everybody, we have five questions. That's a lot for all of you to respond to, all of them within time. We may cut the last one, which is about the school, but if you want to bring that up, I'm just telling you now in case there's a reason for you to bring it up. So let's start with the first question. I'm broadcasting them here so that you can read along. So, within this next six months, this is our first question, the candidates, as I mentioned, had all received these. Within the next six months, the largest commercial development in decades, cell signaling, will formally go before the boards. They're going before the boards next month, by the way. What is your stance on commercial development in Manchester by the Sea? Why don't we start with you, John?
Okay, thank you again, Erica. I think with regard to commercial development, it's time for us to consider that fairly seriously here. We've got a pretty low tax rate in Manchester. In fact, if you look at all of our surrounding communities, we probably got the lowest or one of the lowest that's around, and that is in part due to the fact that there's been some deferred maintenance with regard to our infrastructure here. But that bill is coming due, and it's going to put pretty strong pressure on our tax rate in the coming years. Commercial development, especially in the LCD, and that's where I would focus our activities, can help alleviate some of that pressure. And if they're confined to that north of 128, and you have the right kinds of applicants up there that can be vetted with regard to the types of businesses they're in, and in particular with regard to environmental sensitivity, because it is right next to a conservation area, I think it's a, it's a win for all, for all involved. The developer gets a very pristine setting and an easy access to Route 128, and we will realize tax revenues out of that. As you know, cell signaling is looking to build there. They want to build 128,000-square-foot building in the spot that they're in. It's mostly lab space. I can tell you, lab space is expensive, running $600 to $1,000 a foot. If you do the math on this, the amount of revenue that we would realize out of that is several hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that can, that can certainly help out with regard to the tax pressure that we got. Furthermore, they want to help out with regard to sewer connection over there, and that would not only, of course, facilitate their location, but it would be an attractive feature for other businesses to perhaps locate there. There are 760 acres in the Limited Commercial District. 60% of that is under conservation. There are another 40 or 50 acres that have already been developed, largely around the Manchester Athletic Club, but that still leaves 250 to 275 acres. Some of that topographically is just very difficult to develop, and we all know the story with the 40B on Shingle Hill. That's a tough spot. And some of that area is in wetlands. But still, there is some developable, developable tracts that can be had there, certainly around the western part of the area. And I will say that the largest leaseholder there, landowner there, is Gordon College, and they're interested in developing their tract in some way to somehow monetize the ownership that they've got there. So there are opportunities, and I am certainly behind exploring them to, for commercial development.
Okay, so John Round, it's a yes, and it's a yes because of revenue, and as long as it's in the LCD. That's great. Okay, Karen Bennett. And by the way, just for clarification, 125,000 square feet is phase one of what they've shared, out of two phases, actually out of three. Karen Bennett?
Sure. I support some commercial development and would likely approve the cell signaling project after it's been reviewed by the boards and after we have the final plans, because we need to review them. So it's sort of difficult to kind of answer that until we have finality to some of those things. I also believe that, like John, there's potentially some more space in the LCD where we could develop maybe some sort of assisted living facility or a senior facility, some type of senior housing that could be located there as well. I also support and 100% about our open space, I think, which I believe is roughly 25%. I want to preserve as much of the open space that we have today. I can give you a little story. Every single time I drive north on 128, and every time I come around the corner to Manchester, I am always in awe of all the land we have and the resources we have, and it actually brings a kind of peace to me when I'm driving home. And if you remember that song, "The Big Yellow Taxi," that's what reminds me, and it gives, one day I was driving, and that song came on right when I had came over the top, and I said, I've got to do something, I have to get involved. So that is why I ended up coming here. Once we don't have, if we start developing on some of our open space, it's never going back. We lose it. And I honestly believe that our four founders believed that the space was something that was important for us to have here. It's unique, it's different, but something that we should have. I obviously support the ZBA and the Select Board in opposition of the SLV project. And the reason for that is I think we need to balance the growth that we have and the character. Like John said, I want to maintain the character. The character is very, very important to, I think, everyone who lives here. And I worry about development and growth in the sense, how much support do we have in our infrastructure? Water, how much, we don't even have enough, enough water now in the summer for drought, so I'm very worried about what happens. Whatever we do or don't add, we need to ensure that the proper, we have proper space and that our residents support the initiative of having a well-thought-out plan.
Great, thank you. You started getting into, we're going to get into affordable housing in a bit, so I wanted to stick to commercial development in Manchester. So Anne Harrison, you're up next.
Thank you. The LCD was created as a place where we could have commercial development, not retail, but seriously commercial development, and so far, we haven't done very well at attracting it. We have a doctor's office, but that could be, that's not what we're looking for. John said that our tax rate is low. Our tax rate is low, but our assessments are huge. We pay a lot of taxes. And the way to pay for the things that the town needs, I think, is to attract high-quality commercial development in the LCD. If you don't know, the LCD is basically the whole area north of 128. Majority of that is in conservation now. There are sections that are owned by Gordon College, and there is the area that was associated with the MAC. The place that cell signaling is looking to build is a quarry. There is not a bit of nature left there. It's flattened, it's rocky, it's, needs to be rehabilitated, and I think that cell signaling is a company that has shown, that has environmental sensitivity. Their work, changing the former King's Grant into a lab space, it's very well done. They have pollinator gardens, they have, they're working on native plants. I think this is a group that is actually environmentally sensitive and can build well there. Of course, it has to go through all of the steps with the planning board to get permission, but I think this is a good sign. The town had previously considered, was, New England Biolabs was considering building in the LCD many, some decades ago, and the town thought, ooh, that sounds kind of dangerous. And they did never, never got their permits. Then Christian Books wanted, wanted to build a book repository, and we decided that that was too dangerous with a parking lot near our watershed. I think those were both mistakes, frankly. I think that we would be much less stressed in our taxes and in our ability to maintain our infrastructure if we had agreed to one or the other of those projects. So yes, I favor development, and I think that several hundred thousand dollars in additional taxes will take a lot of the pressure out of homeowners and small businesses in town.
That's great. Thank you. For our next question, we only have an hour, and so one of the challenges that I had sort of coming up with these questions is, you know, how do you, how do you get value out of this? So I'm going to force some choices, and we're going to get into now where I'm going to ask specifics. So the next question, so that everyone can read it. We have a lot of big-ticket items and initiatives to be tackled in the next 12 to 24 months. Which three, and keep it to three, please, would you prioritize as urgent and why? Let's start with you, Karen Bennett.
Sure. Yes, there is so many different things that we need to be working on, and what I would say to you is, the three most important things, in my opinion, are public safety, streamlined government, and affordable housing. So let me start with public safety. I think public safety is imperative for all of us, and I would include safe drinking water in there, but I'm going to avoid talking about that. I'm going to talk about the fire department. I, as a resident, am very concerned that we don't have a fire engine in our station. We have, I don't know if it's been replaced today, but we have a Boston Fire Engine sitting there, and it's, that's not the first time that's happened. The fact that we've had to borrow fire trucks again and again, just for me, goes down to poor planning or poor taking care of the equipment that we do have. So it's very concerning to me as a resident. I want to feel safe, and I think our residents want to feel safest, too. The other item that I'm very curious about, I would say, is we've been through three fire chiefs, and I don't know if it's 10 years or five years, something like that, and that seems very strange to me as somebody that's been in business for as long as I have. It just seems like we, we need to go down a different process. So I think we need to revisit that hiring process. And I also think we should revisit the volunteer fire department. Why didn't we keep that? Why shouldn't we do it again? As far as streamlined government, from a resident's perspective, we want to feel that walking into Town Hall is something that's easier than it is today. Common sense decisions are key, and how we present ourselves is, it's need, it's a need to make it easier for our residents. Make it easy for us to do business with the government in town. The town meeting last fall, as an example for me, was a complete fail. Folks were very upset. At one point in time, residents were booing some of the boards, and, you know, I miss those town meetings when we were talking about dogs on the beach. Anybody else? Because to me, that seems like a much easier thing to deal with. So we passed over several articles, but the boards tried to bring in two of those articles again, and we passed over them again. It's, it's just, residents need transparency. They don't know what's going on. So, sorry. I think, too, that we have to become much more connected with our residents, and we're not. We need to have regular open forums to talk to people like this, where we can have conversations. We don't do that, and we need to do more of that so we can hear from our residents. And in the, in the words of Abe Lincoln, I would say, a house divided is against itself it can't stand alone. So, and the last thing I want to talk, say is about affordable housing. We hear this daily. We have, we have done nothing with our MAHT or CPA funds to purchase homes to convert. Why haven't we done that? Seems to me like there should be funds within those, in there, that we could start making some purchases. So to me, that seems like a place that we could start. If I'm elected, I will work with the, with all the, everyone and make sure we're making common sense decisions.
That's great. Perfect, thank you. Next, John Round.
Yes, thank you, Erica. We invest about $3 or $4 million in capital, capital investments every year, just as a matter, of course, in our budget. And all of the projects we're talking about here this evening with regard to capital investments will require tens of millions of dollars more. So that's on top of that $3 million bucks that we spend every year. If I prioritize the ones that I think are most important, and I will eliminate the Essex Grammar School Grammar School and the treatment of water for PFASs, because both of those are not under our control entirely. They have regulatory oversight, or perhaps there are others that are involved. But all of the other projects pretty much are in our control. And number one, I think I would put down, is a senior center. Seniors have wanted this for many years. They've been, they're still waiting. The numbers are growing. I'm looking out here at the audience. It's well represented here, I will tell you that. You're part of that group, so you've been waiting for a long time. That group is growing, you know, in five or six years, nearly half of us will be 60 years old or more. All of the towns around us have senior centers. And I speak with seniors, they're a little bit jealous. In fact, I'm a little bit jealous. We've been waiting a long time. Now, that's not for a lack of trying. Town management has probably looked at a dozen different sites and buildings as to what might happen. Some of these projects have just been rejected. Others are still simmering, but nothing really has happened. And I think we have to kind of push this issue a little bit stronger, maybe even acquire land and build, build a senior center for our seniors. Many of the seniors that I speak with, they realize that they may not necessarily be around to enjoy the senior center that might get built at some point in time. But we've got to be a little bit more aggressive with regard to the senior center. The second area that I would, I would look at would be the Department of Public Works. There has been discussion about moving that group to someplace else from Pleasant Street, as you're probably aware. In an article in the Cricket, I think it was last week, Greg reviewed the various studies that are going on. One is facility studies, and that will be coming in this summer and will give us some guidance as to what, what might happen there, what the costs are, et cetera. But the current facility is old. To rehab it or to build a new is going to cost about the same amount of money. We should reclaim the space that we've got there on Pleasant Street, which is really more suited for residential, and move it. One of the sites that you know is probably under consideration is where the current compost site is, and they will be moving over to Pine Street. That will become available, and I'm sure that will be something that will be coming out of the report that we will be get, getting later on this summer. The third spot, I think, would be the Rotunda. There are any of number two or three that I could put number three. But the Rotunda is the icon in town. I don't know if you've looked at it from a lot of different perspectives, since the new pilings have been put for the docks next door, you realize how frail the pilings are for that. One big storm will take that Rotunda down. This also is something that is under study right now. There's a study that will come in this summer that will give us a number of choices, but it's an icon that we really can't afford to lose in our town, and I would put that pretty well up on the list. Those are the three.
That's great. Thank you, John. And just as a, I meant big-ticket town items as capital expenditures. So that was the design of the question, and Anne, I hope that that's how you read the question. But you're next, and if you didn't, it's okay. Don't worry about it.
I, I, I did, and I have a question, I have a problem with the question.
Okay.
Because everything we're going to do in the next 12 months, we voted on at town meeting a month ago. There's no more money to put into stuff that we're going to do in 12 months. So we're looking at what we will be doing probably at least 36 months out.
Very good point. Thank you.
And for me, the first item is, we're hardening the wastewater treatment plant. The one place in town that is publicly owned and is in grave danger of a storm is the wastewater treatment plant. We need to find, and, and there are, there is engineering going on now to harden it so that even if the area around it floods, it won't be affected. Any material that is sensitive will be moved out of the basement, I assume, and things will be sealed. But there are more things that need to be done to the wastewater treatment plant. It was recently discovered that they, the wastewater treatment plant uses potable water, treated drinking water, to wash their equipment. They could do that with the output of the treatment plant and save 10% of the water we treat every year. I think that alone is a reason to prioritize upgrading the wastewater treatment plant. Make it safe in a storm and save us a lot of drinking water. And cut down on the amount of water that we put out into the ocean, which is what is the limit of the capacity of that plant. The second, sorry, John, is PFAS. There just is no way we're going to get around that. The new limits, PFAS are a chemical, the forever chemical, that's turning us all into compost sites. And, and we need to get, the EPA has just come out with limits that make both our Lincoln Street and the Round Pond above the limits that they consider safe for human use. So we're not, we will have several years to figure out to do it, but if we don't figure it out in the next year, we're not going to be done by the time the EPA limits are enforceable. And then I don't know what we're going to do about water. And my third is to move the DPW. The DPW has not had, I hate to say that we haven't been maintaining it, but it was built on the cheap, and it's old. And as John said, rebuilding it elsewhere won't cost more than rebuilding it in place. And it's currently sitting on a very desirable piece of land, of land that could be used for much better purposes by the town. And until we move the DPW, we won't be in a position to decide how best to use that property. So those are my three.
I think those are great, and thank you for the specifics. And I love that question because, guess what? Not one of these things are unimportant that any of you mentioned. There are just too many to actually listen to talk about. So let's go on to the next question. The next question drills down to affordable housing. And this is something, and I'll just say before I ask the question, I'll say, if you're against the SLV 40B project, it doesn't mean that you are away from a 40B project. The town is still vulnerable to a 40B project. With that said, let's ask this question. The lack of appropriate housing, very much what you talked about, John, in the beginning, the spectrum of types of housing. Not one category, different types. The lack of appropriate housing is a major challenge. In Massachusetts, the governor mentioned, the lieutenant governor in her chamber address two months ago, mentioned that there is a leakage in the state of talent because of the cost of housing, and they have quantified that. The lack of appropriate housing is a major challenge in Massachusetts, and Manchester continues to fall short of about, by about half of the affordable housing units that's required by the state. What specifically should be done about it, if anything? Let's start with you, Karen Bennett.
Yes. So, yes, I agree, we need to do something. And most people weren't even, aren't even familiar with the goals that we've had, and we, like Erica said, we have secured 5% of the 10% that's required. We should start by using the funds we've earmarked from the Manchester Housing and the CPA to buy some units as they become available. That will maintain the character of the town, and we'll be able to buy a few units at a time, not overwhelming. We have yet, to this day, to buy one unit. And that, to me, says, we could have already had a few units done. I've seen properties been in, for sale that could have been made into something affordable. So we're taxing ourselves by continuing to put money into these funds, and we're not making any purchases. So to me, I, I've heard that some of that money goes to rents, and that's fine. I get that. I understand. But we need to segregate. We need to figure out what the funds, the funds we want earmarked for housing so that we can purchase some housing. When elected, I would encourage, I would encourage our town to be more approachable and transparent to achieving the 40, the 40B goals. We bought, we should be buying home, these housing units that I've talked about. We'll continue to improve the, we continue to improve the infrastructure in sewer and water and all under the roads. We have plenty of, plenty to tax revenue. We need to ensure we spend the money that we have well. I believe all elected officials should be working to preserve the town and its open space, as well as balancing some housing. We have a very special town. I think we all know that. People like to walk, they like to exercise, they like to be around town. That's who we are. People like me are, have moved to this town for this reason. Let's work together as residents and show the vision of Manchester and make sure that is, I know it's cheered by everyone. We will never be 100% in agreement. I understand that. But we're fighting with one another right now, and we need to come together to come to resolution.
Great. Thank you very much. I, just to clarify, do you mean buying homes and turning them into units, like condos?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. So single-family homes to conversions?
Yeah.
Okay. Anne Harrison?
Yeah. That sounds nice, but in order to prevent another 40B, we would need to produce 11 units a year, every year. Buying a house here and there isn't going to make it. And we don't have to be so terribly afraid of 40B. There are friendly 40Bs, and a 40B has a couple of advantages that aren't necessarily obvious. That is, if you have a 40B development and it's 25% affordable, you get to count all of the units toward your affordable housing quota. Now, that doesn't do much for the people who need affordable housing, but it takes the pressure off of us from unfriendly 40Bs. So my approach, what I would like to see happen, is to find land, or, yeah, land, in town that can be built densely. And let me point out that there are places in town that are very dense and that are very nice. Peel House Square, for example, is, is of the dense, is, is dense. So, and I think we can find a developer who could put together a package that could go, not to raise a specific point, where the DPW is currently, and produce something that would take all of the pressure off us from the state and allow us to continue to work on building individual affordable units to, to deal with the problems in town.
John?
Thank you, Erica. Yeah, and, and in one line, I would say, I think we ought to work steadily to increase our affordable housing stock to meet the state standard that we've got to meet. And as, as you know, we're only about halfway there. We need about 235 houses, and I think we're about at 100 or so. We're already working in, in that direction in a couple of different ways. The Manchester Housing Authority, in collaboration with the Manchester Affordable Housing Trust, has got an initiative going to not only rehab the, the units that they have in Newport Park, the Plains and Loading Place, but to add to that. And they also have an option that involves the Department of Public Works space when that becomes available as well. And all of that housing stock would be affordable housing. As you know, most of the affordable housing that we have in town right now is in exactly those places. So we've got an initiative there. I think we need to support the Manchester Housing Trust, et cetera, with its efforts to try and get that to move a little bit more strongly. I'm not sure exactly where they are with regard to a proposal. They are looking for some expressions of interest from some developers. But that's one thing that's already underway. Our planning board also has a proposal with regard to residential housing clusters. It has an affordable housing component. If that zoning, zoning change can go through, we can build more affordable housing through that, that particular process. And finally, 40Bs, as Anne has said, 40Bs can work for us, and we do have them here in town. And I'm in favor of 40Bs if they're done right. They have to be in the right place. And furthermore, we do not need a giant 40B like on Shingle Hill, but something that might be as large as 20 units or so, I think would be fine in the right setting here. And as Anne has said, it leverages the number of buildings, even though only a quarter are affordable. All of them become affordable. So I think with those three efforts underway, we can chip away at this affordable housing challenge and get closer and closer to the state. And as Anne had said, you, you don't have to do it all at once. So long as you've got about a dozen or 10 units that you can get to on a year's basis, they're not going to say anything. So I think that we can try and get to that point somehow using, using the three measures that I just described.
Yeah, thank you, John. I, I just want to, so the Affordable Housing Trust Plan is something that you support as a way of expanding affordable housing?
Yes.
And then I think I may have misheard you, but in case anybody else heard what I heard, did you say that we have 200 units to?
235 or 40 is where we have to get.
I think it's 136 units is what we have in order for us to make it. Isn't that correct?
We need 136 more.
Perfect. Thank you. All right. I did miss here. I'm sorry. I just want to make sure. I don't want to, I don't want misinformation out here. Okay. So let's actually now go to something that is right in front of us. This isn't something that's 36 months away, but right now, a hot topic right now. As a designated MBTA community, we're one of 175 municipalities in Massachusetts that is serviced by the commuter rail, the MBTA. And as a result, we are deemed as a MBTA community by the state, and because of that, Manchester must consider multifamily zoning near the train station by the end of next year, or lose certain state grants. A task force is being created right now, as a matter of fact, on Monday, I believe, there's a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Planning Board to actually round that out. But a task force is being created right now to research this zoning and engage with the public on it. Will you support this task force's recommendations when they come through? Let's start with you, Anne Harrison.
Well, I'm on it, so I certainly will try. Assuming that I get reelected. It's not just a question of grants. The grants are important. My, my friend who is deeply involved in dredging issues points out that if we're, if we're going to maintain our harbor, we need monies from the state. And it's from the state agencies that, that we would be cut off that would allow us to do dredging. And, and the harbor's a pretty important part of the town. The other factor is that when the, when this MBTA zoning requirement was developed under Governor Baker, all that happened was you lost grants. So the harbor fills in a bit. Yeah, we'll figure out something. The Healey administration is going to take a much harder approach to that, and they have said that this is the law and the towns will follow it. I don't know exactly what they mean. I doubt that they will lock us all up, but I think that their enforcement will be much, will be strict. So I don't see that we can just say, nah, this isn't Manchester, we're not going to do it. So we need to work on it. We need to figure out how we can make multifamily housing in downtown work with the character of Manchester and not against it. If you look at, at the relatively new development at Forest Summer Street, people don't notice that, but it's got a lot of housing in it. As I, I mentioned Peel House Square earlier, there are, there are places where we can put dense housing and, and still maintain or improve the character of the town. And I believe that's what this task force needs to figure out how to do. We, among the things that I don't know, and we need, everybody needs to find out, is what is the interaction between this zoning and our historic district? Because the historic district is the core of Manchester. It was denser around the turn of the last century. There were more multi-story buildings down where people lived over stores. And I think we can go back to that Manchester and keep the character. And can, the other question is, so how much can the historic district control the appearance and the size of, of buildings? And that's something I would try to support. And can we require that the developments have an affordable component? And I don't, I don't know yet, but that's something that we should work toward, is anybody who is doing multifamily development downtown has to provide some affordable units.
Hmm. That's perfect. Just to clarify, this is a question about, that's not unlike the referendum on, you know, regional dispatch. It's whether or not you'll listen to and support the task force when it makes a recommendation. I think it's actually premature to have, to ask any one of you to argue whether or not you're for this or not because of the task force, the beginning, but you're on the task force.
I think I started with that, and I will try to.
But you, but you overperformed on the answer. I love it. Okay, so Karen Bennett?
Yes. I, I think you've got a
Yes. I think you've got an advantage because you're on that board, but anyway, that's all good.
Well, I will see if I'm not elected.
Yeah, that's true. I'm all about due diligence, and I think we really need to dig in deep here. Our town's open space is precious, and I said that before. We need to maintain it, and we need to pay it forward to the next generations to enjoy. The MBT housing is not considered low or moderate housing and has nothing to do with the so-called affordability. Developers are in the wings, just waiting to develop in our town. This is what makes me different. I want to work for the residents, not help developers cash in. Some folks believe they died and went to heaven here, and others believe they will get in line with the 40A. As far as I'm concerned, as far as the grants go, we're talking about $60,000 a year, which we're not even guaranteed. We don't know if we're going to get that. With the $7 million in reserves, we have more than enough money to cover that $60,000. I believe the gate, the grant money that we do receive should go to gateway cities. Give those to the cities that are struggling. Give it to them. $60,000 a year is something we can afford. And, sorry? As far as the task force, yes, I would support, I would listen to whatever recommendations the task force would bring, assuming that they are bringing in research and such to the planning board. And I would stand behind them, but the planning board is the ultimate, they would make the decision from those folks that have done the research. They are gathering information from them. That's the way I see it. And we do need that data in order to develop, so.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, there's two things. Number one, did I hear you then say that the answer to the question is that you would not support the task force's recommendation if they recommended we do it? And you would support the task force's recommendation if they came out with recommending against this?
So, I, first of all, I don't know what the task force is charged with. Are they charged with collecting data and giving data to the planning board? Because ultimately, it belongs with the planning board. So, what is the task force meant to be and why is it growing so much? I know it's, I know it's a big undertaking, but to me, you know?
I get it. And then, the only other thing I would say is that I don't, and the Cricket will probably do a piece on this as this issue spools out, but I believe, I know that cell signaling, for instance, is, we're applying right now in real time for a $5 million grant that we wouldn't get if, so that's not the $60,000. So, I don't know, but that is something.
But they've agreed to pay for it if we don't, if they don't get that grant.
Got it. So, it should be cell signaling paying for it. Got it. Okay, John, Round.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say that complying with this is not a choice anymore. As Ann had mentioned, the Attorney General came out, oh, I'd say it was about a month or so ago, and said, "It's not like you can comply and you can keep the grant money, the Mass Works and a bunch of other money, or you don't have to comply and then you don't get the money. You have to comply or we're going to sue you." So, it is really the law. The Attorney General says, "You've got to come up with a plan that meets this somehow." Now, that being said, I will support whatever the task force comes up with for a recommendation. There are 10 people on this task force. There are Planning Board people, Zoning Board, Select Board, the Finance Committee, Downtown Improvement, Historic District Commission, Conservation Commission, and two at-large people. We've got a very diverse group that is very strong and going to be very knowledgeable. There won't be any aspect of this that is not going to be represented by somebody on that group that will look at it and say, "Well, what about this and what about that?" So, I have a good deal of trust that whatever they come up with is going to be something that will have been well-vetted. With regard to the project at hand itself, we have to come up with 37 acres of land that can be zoned at 15 units per acre. And we don't have to build anything. This is purely a zoning exercise. It is not a building exercise. And within our general district, we are very close to that. As it stands right now, the general district is zoned for three units per lot, and the typical lot in the downtown is 8,000 square feet, and there are 44,000 square feet in an acre. You can do the math. In general, we're zoned there already. The key difference is it's zoned by permit, and this requirement says it must be zoned by right. Now, is that going to open up a bunch of floodgates simply because we say, instead of being zoned by permit, built by permit, you have to do it by right? I don't know that I would necessarily be scared with that, because those developers would be at the doors already. So, I think that the plans that they come up with, that our group comes up with, with regard to meeting the requirements here, are probably, we're probably not that far off from where we need to be right now. It's just a question of by permit or by right. So, I don't think it's going to change very much there, and I do support whatever the task force comes up with.
Okay, well, thank you. Maybe the purchasing of homes to convert them into affordable housing will satisfy it, Karen. I don't know. But there's going to be a lot to talk about and figure out with this over the next, the next 18 months. So, I'm going to make an executive decision now, because we're getting into the period where we would eat into time for questions from the audience. So, we had a question about the school district. You can take a look at this. If anybody thinks that this is such a burning issue that you want to ask it, I'll keep it up here in case somebody wants, from the audience wants to ask it, but I don't want to be the one making everybody ask for it. So, what I'd like to do is now get into the questions part of the program. So, any questions from the audience? And I'm going to have Eli Bowling is going to help, so I can stay up here. And what I'll do is I'll keep time, probably. And so, we'll have a couple minutes for questions.
John Round talked about, I was an eighth-grade teacher. I really don't need to have a microphone. John Round talked about a senior center. It's been something that we were discussing when I was on the board 15-plus years ago, and seemed to be a lot of possible plans that have come and gone. I'd like to get each member of the, each candidate to suggest to me where having a senior center is important to the town and in your thinking.
Mr. Round, you'll go first.
Oh, thank you. Well, I did make some comments in that regard where it might be. Certainly, something that is centrally located and has parking is important. Seniors do drive. I'm still driving. And the places that have been looked at in and around the center part of the, center part of the town here, obviously connections to the Town Hall. I know the Masons has been put in there, perhaps some sort of combination with the library. Those are the centrally located areas. I know the Cornerstone Church has been put out there. I would not be in favor of that, because the parking is not good there. And I have seniors walking around trying to find spots to park. It's just, it's just too hard. These are centrally located spots. I might say, might add to that, that I would be in favor of looking for a piece of land that we might buy and build. I mean, we're running out of time, and all of these particular locations have, you know, the other ones that I've just mentioned have problems, and they have kind of longer-term horizons than perhaps finding a piece of land that is in and around town that somebody might be willing to sell, but that's a challenge as well. It's hard, and that's why it's been around since you've been around, Tom. It's not an easy problem to solve.
Ann Harrison.
What John just said reminded me of a story from when we were looking for a place to put the high school, and someone said, "Well, that's easy. All you have to do is find some dry, flat land between, near the center that's affordable. Good luck." I, we have been looking at buildings downtown that could be used as a senior center. I'm going to be perhaps insulting to my audience. I'm not sure that a senior center is of the same level of priority as hardening the wastewater treatment plant, or finding a way to build affordable housing in town, or allowing our drinking water to be safe to drink. So, I am prepared to continue to look for a building that becomes available in the center of town that has parking, and use that as a senior center, and do that as an opportunistic rather than a, than a critical planning issue.
Karen Bennett.
Yes. I also agree that a senior housing facility is needed. Where we can put it, yes, I believe it's someplace that is centrally located. But when I think about the center, there's barely enough parking as it is today. As you said, the Cornerstone Church, what a great place to have it. Is there some way that we can get more parking in there or something? It seems like it's impossible. I don't know. So, it may be that we have to purchase land to do so, but just like my fellow candidates have said here, I'm not sure that it's a top-tier priority, and I think that's something that we would have to hear from the residents about.
Right here.
Karen Bennett, my name is Sylvia Freesendorf. Karen Bennett has used the word transparency several times. I'm going to ask you a very simple question that only has a yes or a no answer. And that is, if you remember, last fall, the town was flooded with flyers that looked official, that looked like they had a town seal, but actually, it wasn't the town seal. And that was filled with misinformation. So, my question, and somehow that was associated with a group called Manchester Matters. So, my question to which I simply wanted a yes or no answer is, have you ever been associated, or directly or indirectly been involved with Manchester Matters?
Yes.
Just a yes or a no?
Anybody else have a question?
All right.
No, I haven't heard from nobody.
Oh, is that for everybody?
Yes, it was for everybody.
Sorry, okay.
Yes. I'd like to know what everybody is doing. So, yes, I signed up for the mailing list for Manchester Matters.
John Round.
And no, I am not on the mailing list for Manchester Matters.
Karen Bennett.
I am, I answered the question.
She answered.
I was told yes or no, and that was it. So, I didn't, I could go on, but I won't.
Anybody else? Next question.
Hi, Gary Russell, 9 Magnolia Avenue. I'd like to build on Sylvia's question and ask for more specifics. All the candidates have supported working together in transparency, and working together is an issue here to my heart. As many of you know, I've served many years in this town on planning issues. I know that some of you are probably thinking, "Well, the Manchester Matters flyers were opinions, and it doesn't really matter," but that isn't true. As a professional planner, I can tell you that they were filled with outright falsehoods. And I believe that it was very much a direct response, the chaos at the special town fall meeting. That combined with the fact that there was legal use of the town seal, I find to be incredibly undemocratic. And so, this is the challenge that many boards face time and time again from both within and out, misinformation. So, my question is, given that context, how will you, as a board member, deal with such misinformation, excuse me, misinformation, including any sanctions for members, or recall petitions, et cetera?
All right, Mr. Round first.
Okay. Gary, thanks for the question. That's a tough question, and it's one for which I think we certainly, as Select Board, would have to take some legal advice, because now we're getting into areas that we don't necessarily have expertise in. But it is certainly something that we need to respond to, and respond to very quickly, and follow up with whoever was, you know, find out who was behind that, and hold them accountable for that. But I would, to go much beyond that, when I say hold them accountable, certainly ask, you know, based upon what legal advice is, ask them to certainly refrain from doing anything anymore and make reparations, whatever that might be, based upon legal advice. But it's, I think speed is really the critical issue there. When you find something, you've got to react, and react quickly to it.
Karen Bennett.
Yes, so I would disagree with some of the comments made about misinformation. I think the information was accurate, and I also would like to add that there seems to be this mystery that everybody has about Manchester Matters. Let me just take a step back and tell everyone that this is a group of individuals, and there's many of them, that are just concerned about what is going on with our town. That is it. There's no secrecy here. There's one person that has stood up and said that they are responsible for the mistake made on the first flyer that went out. I think they have taken responsibility for that, and they understand the mistake. So, but I do disagree with the misinformation that was mentioned. We, as well, have done a lot of research and a lot of work with different legal departments and so on to ensure that our information was accurate. So, that's where I stand.
Ann Harrison.
As I said, I had an opportunity to sign up for the mailing list. I want to know what people are saying in town. I have not contributed to anything that the group has done. And I agree with John, that when misinformation is circulating, whether it's a flyer, or whether it's something on Facebook, it is imperative that the town address those and offer corrections. And I try to do that whenever I can.
Next question.
So, John and Ann.
You just have to project. No, no, no.
Project.
No, 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 you have to use, no, Christina, you have to use the microphone.
Just yell in it.
Oh, it's not working, is it?
No.
It is working. It's recording. It's just not projecting.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So, my question is for Ann and John. So, why should the people of Manchester trust and vote for you after you went against the majority of the people's wishes on the 911 dispatch vote?
All right, well, John, go ahead.
Okay, so, that vote, which I don't remember what the percentage was, like 54, 40, whatever it was, that was a straw poll right up front. It was stated that that was simply to, it was kind of a survey. It was not a binding vote. And it was fairly close. We just wanted to kind of get a feel for those who were voting where things stood, but we in no way were bound by that particular vote. If I had to do it over again, I probably would not have wanted to hold that vote at all. But it was held. There were certain decisions that are made in this town that are really the purview of the Select Board. We try to get everybody's opinion, but there are thousands of opinions in this town, and frankly, most people are busy living their lives, carting their kids around to soccer games, going to work, et cetera. And they don't necessarily have the time, and there's nothing wrong with that, participating and making their opinions felt in the town. So, we had to make a decision based upon all of the input we had, and I would say that vote was only one of several data points in all of that. At the end of the day, if we had not put dispatch where it is, we'd be sitting here with a prop two and a half vote that we would have had to take last month. That money went to the staffing for the police and the fire that we had to do, because the whole group was understaffed. So, from a financial perspective, it was the right decision, we think, that we made, despite what that vote may have come out as being, because as I say, it was only one data point. At this point, everything that is happening with the dispatch is working very, very smoothly, and I am very optimistic that in the next few months, when it is finalized, it will continue in that direction. But a lot of the change is already made, and it seems to me that it is fairly, it's invisible to all of the residents here. As a small town, we have to continually look for ways to be more efficient and to aggregate services with other towns. This is, this is one, I think, that we had to do and was the right decision.
Ann Harrison.
I agree with John.
We, the Select Board, has responsibilities, and the decision about dispatch was our responsibility. We considered the safety aspect of having a single dispatcher and the possibility of multiple incidents, simultaneous incidents, which is a danger. I don't think that someone saying, "Oh, I'm a really good multitasker," necessarily is an answer to, "I've got somebody bleeding here and a heart attack there, and I have to be on the phone continuously with both of them." That's one of the things we considered. We also considered the financial aspect, and because we are not having dispatch in town, we now have three more sworn police officers and two more, well, we have funding for two more firefighters, and we will find them, and the fire department will be up to 16 full-time firefighters, which is the most the town has ever had. So there was the financial, there was the safety, there was the vote. And there was also a fair amount of misinformation flowing around, and having listened to all of that, having visited the Middleton facility, which is an extraordinary place with a great deal of depth and a huge, vast ability to roll over to another facility if there's a problem, we had to, we were charged with making a decision, and I think we made the right decision.
That's great. I think we should wrap it up, just so that we can get to the Planning Board forum, if that's okay? And I think if you have questions, all right, one more question, I should have said it that way. One more question. And then what we'll do is we'll have a quick summary from all of the candidates, and please keep it very short.
Hi, I'm Sandy Dogger-Twitter, and I have a question for Karen. You talk about bringing people together.
Yes.
Yet you seem yourself to have very strong views about things which were put forth in Manchester Matters and the flyer. And I'd like to understand, as a person who disagreed with nearly everything in that flyer, and found it to be counterfactual, what you will do to bring together people who disagree with you?
Yeah. And I think that's exactly what we need. That's how our country was developed, that we have opposing views, and we do have a majority, we have opposing views in this town, and we're not working together. There is a group of people that are not in agreement with what's going on, and so how do I, how do you bring those people together? I think it's reaching out to people and having forums where we can have conversations, and we can disagree. It's okay to disagree. That's how we're going to get better. But right now, we're divided. And to me, having, getting out and meeting with people is the most important thing we can do.
I guess I would ask, would you send the flyer again, then, given that answer?
I didn't send the flyer.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry, I was mistaken. I didn't even know what came up. Okay. All righty, well, that, thank you for clarifying. Okay, so, back to the end of this, we're going to close this down, this session, this portion of our program. And so I would like to invite all of the candidates to sort of quickly close it out. I mean, you started off with an introduction, and I'd like you, to give you the opportunity to, you know, summarize. Ann, why don't we start with you? Then we'll go to Karen, and then we'll go to John.
Running a town is a very complicated procedure. There are lots and lots of things to balance, and I think I have the experience that will make, I have experience that will make it easier for the board to come together for decisions. And thank you for listening to me. You've been very nice.
Yes, please.
I wanted to just thank everybody for coming out and hearing, hearing from us and getting to know everyone, I think is really important when you go in to make, go in to vote. I am passionate about this town. I'm passionate about being responsible and transparent. I'm, as I said, very direct, and I have no problem talking with people about things that oppose, that they're opposed to. To me, that's what we have to do to get better, is we have to have the time to sit, to talk to one another, to make things, to make things better for our town and our people.
Great. John?
Yes. I just, I also want to thank, thank all of you for turning out this evening and allowing all of us, me and me and my colleagues, to share our, share our views with you, and in fact, we got to share, we got, you got the opportunity to share some of your views with us. And really, in closing, I encourage every one of you to vote on May 16.
Yes.
That's a great way to end it. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming.
Thank you.[1758.88][1758.88](Applause).[1759.88]